Okay, we've all meeting order. I welcome everyone's coming out tonight and looking forward to a good meeting. It's always a pleasure to share our board meetings with the public, the general public, and so we welcome you each and every time. We'll go ahead and start our meeting off with our prayer and our pledge, and Mr. Green's going to lead us in our prayer and Mr. Allison will lead us in our pledge.
That's right. Most gracious Father, we thank you with a single for your blessings and your mercies, most of all for forgiveness of sin, but thank you for your Son to die on the cross to give us eternal life. While we pray this evening as we enter into the county's business that you'll give us wisdom, help us to do what's best for the citizens of this county, and help us forward to hold ourselves accountable to that that we say we'll do. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get approval minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I must approve the meeting that's presented.
Certainly.
And also the agenda.
Certainly. You have discussion. All in favor say aye. Okay, moving on to the first thing on our performance tonight will be the Lake James State Park update. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. We are honored to have the Lake James State Park Superintendent Nora Pawke is coming. Don't know that she's made it out yet, but she is. Pawke her shortly, sometime ago, an hour ago, so she should be here very soon, maybe when she can come back.
Well, let's move on to item D, we'll come back to her and Parks Recreation. We've got Chad Marshall with some nice and important. Chad.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and State Members of the Board, my name is Clark, County Manager. I think the opportunity to come forward to the Board, it's always a pleasure. There are several items I know that County Manager has laid out for us, but I wanted to take if I could just a moment and just highlight a couple of things that I was looking through last year at this time that I had a chance to come forward and talk about, just to make sure, do a quick update of what your Parks and Recreation Department's been up to in the last year or so. We had an opportunity this year, Mr. Chairman, to really take a look at our ball fields, and as now as we're starting to get them moving in the right direction, those in our trails, and start doing some what we call beautification, some aesthetics, but some other things that really needed to be done. All any dugouts at Maple Leaf have been rebuilt, installed balis on the ditch lines out of the shooting rain to curb the erosion that's happening there. Replanted some of our restrooms at their ballparks, particularly at Hemp Hill, painted our parking lots up at Maple Leaf and then we parked, procured three new scoreboards, and have installed two of those already at Maple Leaf, procured a spread brick dust along all four of our ballparks, which improves not only to stabilize our ball field and playground surfaces, but it improves the aesthetics and the drainage on each one of those facilities. We procured and installed most needed sunscreens up at our Maple Leaf ballparks, you've seen those. I can't go up there without a citizen coming by and saying, Matt, it's 10 degrees cooler here, so much nicer. Been attracted to have the press box stairs rebuilt at Maple Leaf, which were the same ones that we had in the 90s that were there, installed French rain on Maple Leaf on Field One, procured and installed a new splash pad in the old waiting pool up at Old Fort, and that is functioning as of today, and Mr. County Manager passed our inspection, so the intent is to open that on Friday for the general public, and we're excited about offering that to the citizens, not only up there at Old Fort, but throughout the community. We've met with the designer multiple times, we'll talk about that tonight for the playground area at Old Fort, excuse me, at Maple Leaf, which is going to be made possible by the grant that Blake worked so hard on with the County Manager, and we met with Duke Energy personnel on multiple occasions, and their contractor out of Black Bear, to continue to stay, keep a finger on the pulse of what's happening on that side, we procured five new storage buildings for, that we use as cabins out of Black Bear, and we've already had one of those delivered out of East Side, we still are out here at East Side Storage, and we met with the architect and design team multiple occasions for the rec center project on that project. We continue to offer free programs to the public that are at no cost, absolute zero cost, of which are our stroller size program, which allows men and women, moms and dads, guardians, grandparents, an opportunity to come out with a certified trainer, and come out and do some exercising with their children, bring them out, enjoy some of our parks and trails, just an opportunity to fellowship and get exercise. Second year in a row that we are offering our training for child, which is scheduled again tomorrow, that's a promise to the Board, if that project went well, we continue to offer it. This is the second year in a row that we have been offered, we have been given North Carolina State grant for bicycle helmets, and we got with their schools last week, right before they adjourned, and delivered 100 helmets to those folks. We worked with Shooting Stars, which was incredibly successful, that is a youth archery group here in the county, and they provided, we provided them the range to be able to have three wildly successful youth archery tournaments out there, and Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that the state wants to know how can we make this permit, and so it's something we're going to work with them to continue to try to grow our youth programs here in the county. For the third year in a row, staff has collaborated with two local physicians who will host initiative Let's Get Physical, which is our opportunity to provide free physicals to any parent or guardian who brings their child out, and that will happen at the rec from 8:00 to 10:00 on June 17th and July 29th. And for the third year in a row, Parks and Recreation has collaborated to offer our free punt, pass, and kick competition with the head of McDowell High School on July 22nd, so we certainly appreciate our partners up at the high school. And then finally, we are wrapping up our Little League season, which saw over 850 children in McDowell County participate in our very successful Little League program.
Which was the third highest in the state.
Third highest in the state, Mr. Vice Chairman, and we're hoping that we're going to grow that to the second or first very soon. That resulted in an incredible amount of exposure, which we were awarded four of the six district tournaments here in western North Carolina that will happen here in the county, which will bring, like I can tell you, will bring tax dollars, it'll bring revenue right here, and an opportunity to showcase our fields and our kids. And that means that our citizens don't have to drive up and down the road, they stay right here and play some home games, so wildly excited about that. And on top of the four, the four of the six district games, we're also awarded two of the eight state tournament games. So two of those will be played right here in McDowell County, and so we're very, very excited and proud about that. And then we're going to roll right into our youth football league, which is on its own going now, anticipate that starting in September going through November. We partnered with Little League again this year, and we were able to secure permission to do a fall league, so we're going to offer the first fall Little League that we have done, and we expect that we're going to open up to the first 350 children to sign up, understanding that not all children play ball, not all children play football, and so, you know, some kids play instruments and they shoot archery. How can we provide kids something to do throughout the year, so we're really excited about that opportunity. We're bringing back our wildly popular adult softball league, and that is going to start here again in August, and we look forward to maybe even seeing a couple of our commissioners out there, yanking on a hamstring or two maybe.
No, after what I saw was painful.
Thankfully, no, EMS is recalled, but it went well. And speaking on that, sir, we were very proud of looking to have Little League come out and do a fundraiser for some of this All-Star district tournaments that are coming up, to try to, you know, lessen the blow of some of the costs that some of our parents here are already exposing here in county, so, you know, working really hard for all, everybody to be able to play. And then I will roll into our fall youth basketball, which will run from December to March, and then our adult basketball will sort of happen, coincide with that in January, March time. That is my quick report, but I know the County Manager had a couple of items in, sir, so I'll stand by if you want to attack it, whichever one you want to talk about first.
It's okay. Maybe skip to a couple of the items that are maybe already been addressed indirectly. Mr. Marsh talked about the Maple Leaf playground project. You asked last month to see, I think, drawing of that and a cost estimate, and that's on page 34 of your packet. Mr. Marsh has met as I buy with the designer, and they've presented a very nice plan. Again, this is idea behind this park is that it's accessible for people of all ages, but especially children, and so you have a cost estimate there that's been provided by the vendor, a couple of different options, pin on resensing involved if we do it. So the idea is that the company is going to provide at a minimum the playground equipment and the surface, the county will probably do, will definitely do the sidewalk around it and whatever's required by the grant, and the picnic shelter, and if we can do more beyond that, depending on costs, certainly we'll do that. So if we're okay to keep proceeding as presented, we'll keep plowing ahead, if that's okay.
I want to stand again to get around to the break and come to talk about that.
Yes, sir. And anything, just for information, Mr. Marsh knows this, for Board's information, if we start to deviate from what was in the application, we have to go to that Board and get permission, so it can be very, very difficult to make tweaks. So thankfully, the playground equipment is within budget, and so the other things that we're needing to do, hopefully everything will fall in place, we're hoping with our grand budget. The other item there, at least one action item related to Black Bear, you approved the purchase of five camper cabins that are pending order. Anything we do at that park is going to have to go through the county approval, has to go through Duke Energy, and has to go through the FERC, since that is licensed to do to operate, meant to lease to us. So they are pending approval of the cabin actually being placed there. Two things we're working on here, I passed out an example of some of the discussion between staff, our staff and the Duke staff, on our operations plan, which you have approved. They have sent some minor tweaks that are asking to be done, and so we would like your blessing for these minor things, but I would administratively ask, if there's a typo or a word needing to be changed, if you would at least give us some flexibility and some...
Are you recommending changes, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve the changes as presented, with staff having the ability to handle typos.
Certainly. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Thank you. And the last item under that is approval of an office cabin that would be placed for staff to check in campers. I recommend in your packet, as you see, that we use ARPA interest for that purchase, which you have a quote from the local vendor for that.
What's the...
About $10,000.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase out of the ARPA interest and funds.
Certainly. Motion and a second, discussion.
And does that, Mr. Chairman, does that fund still have around $100,000 in it?
It does, after this, it'll have about $90,000.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye. And so the, leaving the biggest item maybe for last, the recreation center project that has been out for bid, you will recall that a couple of weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, we had a bid opening planned, we only had two bidders that showed for the bid, so we could not have invited to understand all at that time, so the bid opening was put forward about two weeks. We did have a bid opening on June 1st. Just to remind you, our budget for that project was at $4 million, which is state money that was appropriated to for that project specifically. And bids were opened on the 1st, and you have the bid tab there in your packet, page 33. And as you can see, and this has been reported to you, the lowest bid for bidders, the lowest was Hickory Construction, a little over $10.4 million. So quite a bit of a difference, and that's definitely an understatement, between 10.4 to 4 million. And so there's been a lot of discussion with staff, several of you recall and asked questions about, go, what do we do now? What we're recommending at this point is that you just essentially receive the bids, have them entered in the minutes, and you wait on action. Action eventually is going to have to be accepting or rejecting them. If you accept them, there's going to have to be an identification of other funds to make up some difference. I explained in the memo that if you deviate too much from that bid, a reasonable amount is the statutory word, too much, then you're going to have to read the bid, and then we'll start all over, probably with a scope change. And so there's pending submissions to state for additional funding, et cetera, so...
For the, for the difference?
Yes, that's been asked for, some understanding, so until some of those things, our expression play out, I would recommend just taking the bids, entering the minutes, contacting the contractor, just let them know, all four, let them know where we stand, and that final decision is pending within the next...
I make a motion to receive the bids as presented, and allow staff to get back with the individual contractors.
Certainly. You have discussion.
I would like to just ask a question. Would it be feasible, possible, whatever, I know that it's my understanding that you usually do this with a low bidder anyway, but I would suggest do it with all bidders, if you're going to cut things out, to let each, each one of those adjust, because it's going to be better to have four companies fighting for it than just the one company working with us. That's just a, that's just a request. If you have something to say.
And we asked a question to, I did it, Patrick, to Mr. Wood, what's, what are we responsible is as that, the government entity here in regard to lowering or modifying, or what's the official term, Chad?
Value engineering.
Value engineering.
Yes, sir.
The low bid, and what, what's our legal responsibility to the other bidder saying? And that's where that whole 10% came into place there, right? Mr. Wood, can you change the scope of it?
You can negotiate with the low bidder some value engineering, and that's where the statute allows reasonable adjustments to that low bid. I have reached out to the school of government for their opinion on what reasonable is. There is no statutory definition, so reasonable is in the eye of the beholder. So for you as a board, it may be 10%, as a contractor, it may be 5%, general public may be 20%, so it may be somewhere in the middle. And so we're looking for support of an, of an opinion from the school of government, who deals in purchasing and bidding, if they're an expert in that field.
Would like to just ask a question, would it be feasible to include the others, just to have some competition there? That's all. I'm ready.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We set the bids. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both. Mr. Wood? Is that all you have?
That's all we have.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Chad, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Just go back up to the item May, Lake James State Park, I see that Ms. Nora is here with us, so Nora, we welcome you to podium.
Thank you. My apologies for being late, thanks for the invitation. I have just a handful of updates, and then I will welcome any questions. I think you all know that we opened our visitor center finally this past March, we had a wonderful turnout for our riddling cutting there, and I know some of you were, were present, so thank you for that. The swim beach is open for the season, that opened May 1st, and it's open every day through September 30th. We are currently missing some full-time staff, we're up to 13 full-time positions, which is an increase from a few years ago, but we have recently lost some staff, some permanent staff to other neighboring parks, so we are down five staff members heading into the summer season. Bob's Creek State Natural Area, which I think you all know is our newest state recreation area here in McDowell County, they snagged a couple of my new staff, I think these guys are smart because they know, they moved to a park that doesn't have any facilities or any visitors yet, but they are, they are helping us out this summer fill in some of the gaps, and we've also lost a couple of maintenance staffs. So we will have some permanent positions opening up, hopefully later this summer. Unfortunately, not early enough to get me through the summer season. We are, our staffing levels for our position numbers for seasonal and temporary staff, those are the folks who've come on and worked with us for six to 11 months out of the year, we're up to 26 seasonal and temporary positions. I believe we've got all but three of those filled. A surprise, a wonderful surprise to us last week is that the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources gave all of our seasonal and temporary staff members a $3 raise across the board. So that brings our lowest paid seasonal attempts up to $15 an hour, and our highest paid, some of the lifeguards, up to $19 an hour, but we are still struggling to hire lifeguards. But we've got our general utility workers who work with maintenance, I believe we just filled that last position, and then our concession stand and boat rental folks and office positions are all filled. So we are heading into summer a little bit lower staff than we would like, but the last couple of weekends have, we've, we've made it. Let's see, our visitation year to date up through May of this year, 434,000 people, that is down with last year's attendance for the month of June was around 77,000, we're projecting about half a million, or about half a million visitors this year. So we peaked in 2021, over 600,000 visitors coming out of COVID when everybody was flocking outdoors, so we feel like this is more of a normalizing across the board. The, let's see, future, future projects that we're looking at, now that we've finally got the visitor center and the Cove Bridge open, we are working to secure funding for a new RV campground and a few camper cabins. We hope that will complement the ones in the county. I know the 16 years I've been at Lake James, we have, we receive calls weekly, if not daily, for RV camping and cabins, so we're finally, I think the legislators have heard from us enough, I know they're going to make it happen when they can make it happen, so we hope to have that funded in the next year or two, and the plans call for approximately 20 or so campsites and about half a dozen camper cabins, and those would be at the Paddy's Creek section of the park. We are continuously working on adding new trails, we are currently close to around 30 miles of trails between both sections of the park. We are currently working on sections of the fauna flora state trail, we'll be adding a new section, we'll be going out to bid later this summer, and that will go from Benfield, well, from the Canal Bridge access down adjacent to Benfield's Landing Road and head south down there. So we have about a two-mile section that'll go in there. We are working on making some upgrades to existing trails in Paddy's Creek so that they will allow for bicycles as well as, as hikers, and several other trail connections. We have a connection from the visitor center that will tie into the existing trail system, as well as a few loops that leave from the visitor center and loop back around. So we've got, I think, six or seven future trail projects that we'll be looking towards, including one that will connect Paddy's Creek to the Catawba River area, to the old section of the state park. We continue to rent out the old swim beach at the state park, this has become wildly popular, it's rented just about every weekend and a few weekdays. I'm not sure, I don't think the pricing has changed since we started renting it with our fees included, it's $328 for the day, and folks get the shelter and the beach for the day. We get a lot of this time of year, it's a lot of graduation parties, weddings, end-of-year school picnics, family reunions, church picnics, you name it, people love that beach, it's a great option, so we, we welcome folks to rent that, and it's easier actually to operate the park with that rented than when it's not rented. We do have lifeguards, five of the eight lifeguard positions filled at the Paddy's Creek beach, so we do charge when lifeguards are on duty there. When the old beach is rented, we do not provide a lifeguard for that. We continue to work on making upgrades to the Catawba River section of the park, which is the old state park, but it's, it's slow with staffing and funding. We always have probably half a million dollars or so worth of requests from major maintenance each year, and we might only get one or two small projects funded. That's across the state, there's just not enough major maintenance money for us. But we have some upgrades we've, we've made, we've been replacing some of the grills at the picnic areas, the office and bathhouses were painted last year, and I think it's been a few years since I've updated the, the Board, but we've, we did replace the fishing pier and the overlooks two to three years ago, probably since my last update here. And we've also made some upgrades to the, the beach facility that's rentable, and we'll continue to make little upgrades there through the picnic area, we've, we've tore out some old steps that were no longer used and remulched it and done a lot of reseeding, so we, we continue to do work over there, we're actually getting ready to do an amphitheater adjacent to the, to the campground, that still remains our, our most popular campground, it fills up farther in advance than the new campground, people still love that, that old one. So it gets a lot of love, which means it needs a lot of, a lot of maintenance also. In the next year or two, I did not get funding to do the upgrades this year, but we are looking to replace some of the timbers around the campgrounds, continue to place, replace grills, continue to replace picnic tables as they wear out. The septic system is getting an upgrade later this year, I think they plan on starting on that after the busy summer season, so later this fall, we'll probably be closing down part of the campground while that's, while that's taking place. Let's see, we also need additional projects that we'd like to get funding for next year if we can, the jetty that is adjacent to the swim beach, we need to replace the railing on that. We will continue to do smaller projects as time allows, and I could do some of this out of my park budget, but we also will continue to look for grants to get some of that work done, as well as volunteer labor, looking at Mr. Green over there, he's always, always willing to jump in and help him, we appreciate him. Let's see, what else? I think, as far as updates, I think that is all that I had, as far as what's coming. I mean, we've been working on the visitor center and the bridge for so long, we're ready to wrap that up. We still have a few punchless items, but we're already looking forward to getting started on the new RV campground and continue with trail work and just provide the, the wonderful service to the citizens.
Nora, what size RV's argument is going to be, fit wheels, class C's, I mean...
I don't, we will, the newer RV campgrounds with state parks, they're designing them to pretty much fit all sizes.
We appreciate you using some of that money on our side.
Absolutely.
But if you all have not been to the new visitor center, you need to go, it is a beautiful facility, and I'm sure that it will be used by schools and public... It is a beautiful facility and I'm sure it, it will be used by schools and public in general. But it, it's beautiful. We appreciate watching that.
Thank you, thank you. And I keep finding, I know for a few years it was, there were a lot of concerns that the McDowell side of the park was going to be forgotten. But I should, that's the side I live on. That's where my family, where I've been raising my family. And we, we give it as much love as we possibly can. It's, we saw a dip in visitation over there when the new park opened, but people have made it. I mean, they love it. It's, it's more shaded. It's more quiet. So people looking for a nice, quiet place to recreate still go over there and it's as busy as, as it ever was. Minus the Swim Beach. You can do without the craziness of the Swim Beach. Swim Beach used to grin, but yeah, people are still hiking and picnicking like crazy.
It's surprising the, the amount of people that use it in the wintertime.
Yes, our regular dog walkers and hikers and.
Campers too?
Campers. Now that we're open, we did, so we did our renovation of that in 2016 to make it possible to keep the campground open year-round. And we get more business than we realized we would. So it was definitely a, a good, good decision.
Okay. Thank you, Doris, for bringing that to us. We'll certainly appreciate what you do and we will be mindful in, in your means. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearing. So I'll go ahead and declare a public hearing. Say it for NC 2011 statute 159-12. Now, anyone that wishes to speak tonight, when it comes to your turn to speak, please state your name clearly and for documentation purposes. And it must pertain to the voted, please. So, Mr. Clerk, yes. Fred, do you have any?
I don't hear nobody.
Nobody?
May I?
I believe Mr. English may.
Okay, Mr. English. Yes, sir. You have him for.
May I?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right. You know, I've sat for 26 years behind a roundabout and I always wondered why people got nervous when they got left to speak. And now I understand. I'm here tonight. My name is Terry English. I'm chair of the McDowell County Board of Education. And I'm here tonight to thank you folks for remembering us kindly all these years and help us accomplish really great things for our students and for families and our community. I'm also here tonight to ask you to remember us kindly as you can this year. I don't know why it is, but one of our, well, let me back up and explain to you again. Out of our total budget, 85% of that is human resources. In other words, salaries and benefits. So anytime we face a shortfall, that's what gets affected first. Now, I'm not saying we're gonna send people home, but I did want you to realize, and I'm not sure why it works out this way, but the employee benefits package for school system employees is nearly 30% of their salary. So for every $2 we spend on an employee, we have to spend almost a dollar to go with them. So that's really huge in our budget. I'm sure you fellows are also aware that a lot of the federal money that was sent globally to address COVID-related issues, that's going to be leaving next year. And we've managed to use that wisely and we've begun some really great programs. One is universal pre-K. And it's a long-term investment in our students and, and our community. And while we were in the process of searching for a new superintendent, the board held listening sessions at all the schools and with all the administration and other staff. And that was one of the things that was mentioned at every single place that even after only a couple of years' time, that people could see that it was making a positive impact. So that's something we're going to have to figure out how to make happen after the federal funds leak. We also were made very aware that there are a lot of mental health needs and issues among students and staff people as well due to the COVID era. That takes some doing. We do have an increase in population, the exception of children, students. They have special needs and that takes some doing as well. Also, the board has identified behavioral issues that we need to address systematically. And we're not, we're just in the head-scratching stage, I guess you would call it now, of how to address some of those along with the administration. But that may be something, all our folks tell us it's, it's needed and the community tells us it's needed. That may be something that we, we need to try to make happen as well. And lastly, McDowell County School System is just like any other household. We're not immune from inflation. And it just costs more to do the things we did last year. It just costs more to do them this year. So we're not here begging, pouring out anything. We're not here to trash you folks. Y'all have been good to us over the years. But all we ask is that you do your very best effort and we know that you do. So gentlemen, I thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you very much. Ian, comments? No, we're outside. Okay.
May I question you, Mr. English?
Second. All in favor of say aye? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. I'll just, just make my statement that, that we could vote and approve the rest of the night, but we're not ready based on waiting on the state to see what they're going to do or a couple of projects we have pending. And, and I would like to see in regard to Mr. English's store, if there's any way in the budget, and we have time to do this, to examine and reexamine that one more time and see if there's any option to try to help those guys identify where the money will come from, that you would recommend to do so. So just, we're still, Michael, you still working on it?
Yeah, along those same lines, you know, with that universal pre-K is, to, to me is a very important item. And, and you know, we want to exhaust every avenue we have to kind of see that we can take, help take care of those.
Well, we're, we're good on it for this year, but next year's when we might have to do some left-hand. Gentlemen, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Terry. All right. Moving on to old business now. Let's go to the final item, the water project updates. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. There's one action item under water updates. You have a water shortage response plan and an act reservation with that plan. We ask you to approve it.
Mr. Sheriff, may I question approve the plan as presented?
Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor of say aye?
I present the updates. Again, we're starting very soon on phase 1A and 1B as well as the universal water and sewer. Happy Tom is in the phase 2A, getting a lot of blenders and numbers, or heading to the state for planner view. East End is close to being contracted. ARC project around there. NADI is not, we've not slightly mentioned that yet. And we're still waiting on a grant announcement for the West Marion Elementary Area Water Project. So lots of, lots of projects.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Let's move along now to O and B, which is the building projects.
Again, updates, a little more substance to some of these as opposed to prior ones. For the services building, you do have some information from our architect, which is CBSA. The gist of the services building project again is focusing right on the second floor. You directed some time ago to relocate probation parole to that floor. In order to do that, the existing tenants would need to be removed somewhere else. We have 300 and about $25,000 of state funding identified for that project. If you can see the cost estimate, which is page 85, is 851,000. So quite a bit of difference of available funding versus project cost that is the thing lately. And so what I would recommend with a lot of the other things going on is just, we've got information, just let something, just let's step, step back and see how some of the other projects that are in, in discussion take place. Old EMS station on Garden Street, I haven't driven by it today, but it is almost gone the last time I drove by. And so once that is gone, the idea is to work with the city on, request has been submitted for the city to assist with constructing, partnering a lot in its place. The next item, you had allowed staff to contact an architect for the Old Ford Senior Center. There is a drawing in this packet of a, of a rough schematic of what a division would look like at Old Ford Senior Center. And again, a lot of these are getting us, as specifically this one, with the drawing, with the cost estimate, that we won't be flat-footed if a grant opportunity comes along. We've got a drawing, we've got a cost because saying, hey, we're ready for an expansion that meets a need, whether it's a dogwood or golden leaf or something like that. So we're using donated funds to come up with these costs. We're working next on geotechnical exploration. And the last item, the pilot plant sale, this is the former small animal processing facility south of town. We have, you've approved a sales agreement and there's a title search and the preparation happening now. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks that'll be closed out. We can move on.
Okay. Thank you. Will, Mr. Wood, can you give us an animal service update?
Yes, sir. You had directed again several months ago for staff to look at property along 226. The county owns two plates. Again, I have, again, set it up for funding and whatever else. Have a rendering done for replacement shelter buildings since the one we're operating in now, according to the state, is substandard for modern-day regulations. So you have a rendering there on page 94. It's focused mainly on having more dog runs and those are where the dogs will stay. I believe there's about 32. So you can do about two dogs per run. And there are spaces for, you know, medical treatment and so forth that were critiqued over and over. Don't have a cost estimate yet, but we're meeting with architects very soon. We're meeting with staff again Wednesday to go over this drawing. Very preliminary idea is to get some cost, again, go back to people that have committed to give you funding, other fundraising opportunities first.
Thank you. Let's move on to new business and we've got an action item under the fireworks approval, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. So you see the statute 14-413 requires the board of commissioners to approve each fireworks show in the county. We'll get to the caveat in a second. So you have a list from our, our inspections department, page 99. These are shows that are proposed to be shot, I guess, out in the, the county. And so we're asking first that you approve these shows. And they have presented information that they are following up with.
May I question approve the show, the fireworks, the spot shows that you're presenting?
Second. Discussion. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And you also have two resolutions. You were allowed by that statute to delegate approval authority to your municipalities. And so Marion has been approving those shows for the 4th of July session.
That's in my ability, right? Will we do that?
That's right, and they do.
May I question approve of the.
Both resolutions, both resolutions. Second. Okay. Approval for both resolution, motion and second have been made. All in favor of say aye? All right. Thanks, sir. Next is the Golden Lake Grant. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. One item of updates. The phase one of the Universal Technology Park grading, this is the site intended for Forza X1. It is essentially complete, perhaps totally complete, but we'll say essentially for now. And so we are working, again, you've identified that property to be sold to that company as part of the settlement agreement. And so we're having the property resurveyed for the boundaries, Mr. Coates. We'll do the deep work and then we'll go back to you hopefully in July to finalize that sale to the company so they can start construction and employ people.
Time line is still looking as if October 3rd is the end of the year.
Yes, sir, to start construction. So, so that's an update at this point. I do have two action items. You saw the press release that was in the newspaper about Universal Technology Park Phase 2. County applied and received $1,378,550 of grant funds to grade a second site, which is at the end of that whole site. So asking approval to receive that grant there. And then the next item, which is Project Splice, is an older grant that was awarded to NIDA about two or three years ago. In hindsight, the county should have been the applicant because of our financial wherewithal.
Your motion to approve both grants? Second. Any discussion? All in favor of say aye? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next is the FY23 budget update. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. I have for information the sales tax and property tax collection report for current year. Also have project ordinance amendments. And I have budget amendments GF 62 through 73, FD 1 and 2, Enterprise 3, self-insurance 1, school project 2, universal enterprise 1, and 911.
Motion, we can probably vote it out of that question. Second. Motion in the second. We have a discussion. All in favor of say aye? Any vote. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next is administrative items. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Again, these are housekeeping type items. You have a water leak request from a Nevoa water customer. You have a resolution that you've seen something very similar before or I hope you would settle on it. We got some feedback from the state that we need to tweak a few things. Again, nothing of substance, but we did move the award dates to be from July to June. Which is where in June now. We have EMS write-offs. You have several grant agreements related to the HUD Home Consortium. You approved a budget ordinance earlier. This is actual agreements with our foothills regional commission. And then the last item, the NC Department of Animal Quality is requiring each transfer station operator to establish a reserve fund for closure. It may be 30 years from now, it may be 100, but we have to start closure fund now.
Mr. Sheriff, may I question approve the administrative items and ask for a second?
Any discussion? All in favor of say aye? Okay. More votes, Mr. Clerk?
I have quite a few today. So we are still searching for the faith-based seat for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. And I have a lot of first readings for various boards and committees that are coming vacant next month. And so all of these are first readings. The Library Board of Trustees, there are two vacancies to serve on that board. One is for the Old Ford District and one is for the Marion District. One is for the Old Port District and one is for the Marion District. The McDowell Technical Community College Board of Trustees, they will have one vacancy to serve on the board. The Planning Board, there will be four vacancies coming available in August. The Senior Center focal point advisory committee, there will also be four vacancies coming available in July. The Transportation Advisory Board, there's currently one vacancy. The Tourism Development Authority, which we call the TDA, there's one vacancy. The Agriculture Advisory Board, they have one vacancy. And then for the second reading, this is the second reading for the Jury Commission. Larry Lidle has applied to continue serving on the Jury Commission, and based on your votes on the ballot sheet, he is going to continue serving. And I also had you vote on the Historic Preservation Commission. We had to have an approval for term limits, which you all approved unanimously.
Do you have applicants that have already submitted for all these others?
I get it.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next is tax matters, Mr. Wood, we've got an item on there.
Yes, sir, we do have some releases. They are routine.
Mr. Chairman, the first press would make a reason business closed in Sadee seventy-nine, twenty-nine, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve all of that right now.
Okay. Got a motion, do we have a second? Second. We have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Would you like the staff to research that?
Yes. All right, moving on to citizen comments. Do we have anyone on citizen comments? Okay, moving on to Commissioner Staff, of course. Does anyone have anything?
Meeting next Monday at eleven thirty.
Okay. Motion.
Make a motion to adjourn until next Monday at eleven thirty.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
All right.